Well, let's call this special board meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Demakia.
Yes.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Welcome back. You know, we've been, send us some communications back and forth, you know, text messages and emails and, you know, when, you know, we thought about it, you know, we do gotta do the pledge.
Did we give us some board docs?
Huh? Did we?
No.
It's on there.
Exactly. Just checking.
It should be. It should be. We'll talk about that here in a second. Uh, yeah, let's do Fledge of Allegiance and then figure it out. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the free land of America and to the Republic which expands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, like I was saying, you know, it's been a minute since we last met and, you know, after, you know, going down to Columbus and having some conversations and, you know, thinking about all that we have going on in the district and although the status of the district has changed, it's important that the elected Board of Education still meet, stay, to stay up to date. There are some pending things that were out there that we were dealing with and I think it's important for us to at least continue making sure that those things are handled appropriately because I think we still do have an obligation as a Board of Education to meet and discuss those things. And again, I also think it's important that we get updates from, you know, Josh and his staff and anybody else that is necessary because again, we're going through a lot of change in this district. But our position, you know, maybe our authority changed a little bit per the law, but our positions have not. So as elected officials, I think it is important that we meet. So moving forward, as I've communicated, you know, via email about our meetings, I like to, unless there's objections to it, I'd like to continue scheduling our board meetings to have these updates and open dialogue and again, give the public if anybody, you know, obviously I wasn't expecting too many people to be here this evening because it's been a while since we had a board meeting. I don't, I do know that the citizens of Lorraine Schools wanted to be here, but Bambi Dillon's out of town, so she obviously expressed her regret of not being here because she, you know, they have an important decision to discuss as well as far as the levy committee and the community and, you know, we're a major part of that as well. So again, I wanted to get us back on track and get refocused and, you know, establish what our role is as a Board of Education in this district. With all that being said, I don't know if anybody wants to add to that comments.
I just think it's important that we continue to meet. That is a very wise thing to do. We still have to take care of the business of the district.
And I think we probably should have some conversations because traditionally we would have our organizational meeting on the first meeting in January and in terms of, we have our traditional, you know, agenda piece and there are some things on there that could be different. So probably speaking with everybody, who those would be, yourself, legal counsel, so that, you know, things that we normally approve, some things I think are still ours to approve, other things I don't know where they fall at and so we need to get some clarification on that. I think the other reason thing is this is a special meeting because it's off of our normal meeting schedule. I think once we regularize our meeting schedule, I know I've had, I get lots of questions from folks on what's what. And I think once we regularize our meeting schedule again, they'll be able to come, express their thoughts, ask their questions because there's just, there's kind of a vacuum of real information. I think we get some notifications on some things, very little information and absolutely no education. And for us to be, as elected officials, we need to be educated on what's going on in the district. If it's not for decision-making, for FYI. And so I think we have to create whatever that looks like. How does this board become informed and educated on the ongoing developments of this district? Because we still have that accountability to citizens and when we have to make recommendations to citizens, we need to be able to make those recommendations, be it on levies or other things, based on clear knowledge and information. And right now, that, there's a vacuum. We don't know. So.
I think another aspect is, I'm sure this happens to everyone, not just me, that is, sometimes you get, you get calls from people in the districts for certain situations and usually it's something that we would just forward on to the superintendent and I'm wondering, where does that go now? I mean, do, do we just send it on to Dr. Hardy? Does he take care of it? Who, is it, well, I know if it got taken care of or, or whatever. I mean, Josh, that might be a question.
You could probably forward it on to me and I'll get it in front of the right people.
Yeah.
I think for right now, I mean, I, with the absence of a superintendent, I would think it would ultimately, it would be the decision of Mr. Hardy as to who he wants to answer and what or doing what.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're still answerable to the people, you know, in the district one way or the other and, you know, sometimes it has merit, sometimes it doesn't. It's, it's up for him to decide, you know, whoever is, whether it be the superintendent or the CEO or whatever, but I mean, there, I, I've had one and I just kinda let it go and I felt bad because I did let it go, you know, so.
Well, if it's, if it's somebody specifically in the district that has, that has a concern, by all means, reach out. We don't want somebody to go unanswered or not getting
Yeah.
the appropriate attention it deserves. So.
Yeah, because before I, I would suggest that somebody had, if they had a problem, just to go sit down with, with Dr. Graham and, you know, he, he has such an open door policy that you just go, I told him if he doesn't give you the answer, he might give you a way to get to the answers. You know, usually things, things would work out that way, but I'll, I'll do that now.
And we do still have both meetings scheduled for December, irregularly scheduled. We don't, we haven't been canceling them until up in, like the Friday before, so.
And it's safe to say that we'll continue those.
Okay.
Okay. Obviously, we don't have any visitors here to speak, but I do wanna recognize our board member-elect, Yvonne Johnson. Welcome. Congratulations on your election. You'll be a part of these here real shortly.
Easy pickings.
You'll be, you'll be in the fire real soon. I need a motion to, I had to call the first hearing in the public, but unless Yvonne, you're still part of the public, if you wanna have anything to speak on.
Okay.
Need a motion to approve or amend the signed minutes?
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Any old business? And report and recommendations of the treasurer?
Okay, I'll start off 8.01 and I handed out three different packets. It might be remotely in order, but the one here that starts off with employee cost, that's gonna be addressing the transition from the health trust and we're moving from the health trust now to the Lake Area Regional Council, which is a consortium. Currently, it has 11 other districts. We will be the 12th. We will be making up a sizable portion of their pool. The decision of, from the trust to go away from the trust was not a difficult one. We were looking at roughly, I think it was a 64% increase on current rates just due to the amount of claims we were running. Our claims, we were looking at having a deficit of roughly about 860,000 by the end of the year. And of course, you guys all know this, we were trending this way in the first six months of the year and it just progressively was getting worse. We're kinda hoping for a little stabilizing. The numbers leveled off a little bit considering they weren't climbing the way they were claims-wise. So I reached out to the treasurer as well as a few other members of the consortium just to kinda test their feelings on it. What this does for us, I believe, is at least stabilizes those increases year over year. We will see that initial bump, similar probably to the bump we were gonna see staying with the trust in that first year, but this puts a cap on it then. We start to see then, we'll see the costs kinda trail down then because it's giving us an absolute per each one of the plan carriers. It gives us an absolute dollar amount year over year. They haven't seen higher than a 6% cost increase over the last 10 years and usually they're closer to right around 4% on their rates. The rates we do have are locked in for a year and a half. So it's gonna be a full calendar year of 18 and then the half a year of 19 to kinda get us on the track of when they renew their rates. They renew in the spring, or the spring for July 1st, where we typically were renewing for January 1st. So we locked them in for a year and a half. The rates then, we'll probably see that slight increase of somewhere between 4 and 6% year over year after that. The, after, the, the current rates include a vesting piece. So we're vesting into their pool and that's, you know, same, same thing. We don't have an individual claims history anymore. It'll be in the pool, but as that pool has ups and downs, they'll, or as the group has ups and downs, they'll lean on the pool to get them through the year. Similar model to the trust in that because we had the pool or the, drawing a blank on what it's called, but we had a similar model in the sense that we leaned on kind of the savings piece of what we had previously.
It's like your rainy day money, yeah.
Exactly. Exactly. And I can tell you in most cases, well, in the last five years, they have had at least one health holiday where they had no rates for employee, or no cost for employees or the district paid no cost for at least one month. And actually, this past year, they've had two. So they, they've always had at least one in the last six to seven years. So that, and that savings isn't even factored into what I'm projecting. We can't take part in those until we're fully vested in the pool and that's the other piece. So after the four years of being vested, that piece drops off and we'll actually see rates drop by roughly about 19%. So when I did the trending, if you look at it from where we're currently at rate-wise to where we'll end up at the end of the, in the vesting period, we're gonna see our rates climb 10%. Whereas on average, you're looking to 4 to 6% per year, we're gonna come in significantly under that based on what we're showing. So this kinda puts a cap on, on those increases that we were seeing year over year.
Are the rates similar to what you projected about in the last three, four weeks?
Yes.
For?
Yeah, the last three or four weeks, those rates were already locked.
Oh, okay.
When I, when I did the whole, you know, cause I, I presented, I did a big group presentation and then also did a presentation for the majority of the union meetings, just to kinda bring it, but that, yeah, at that point before we had the, the big meeting,
Yeah.
I had the locked-in rates.
That's the one I went to. I went to the big meeting just to, I wanted to know how things were going, so.
And the nice thing about it is, cause one of the, one of the issues we always had was we didn't feel there was enough of a gap between Plan A and Plan B from people to have to make a tough decision on which coverage they truly needed. We made sure that when we did this, we planned it out to where for the premium, if an employee opts into a premium plan, they're gonna pay 20% of the overall cost of the plan. If they opt into a standard, they're gonna pay 15%. Basic, they'll pay 10% of the plan and minimum value, they'll pay, they'll pay 0%. So it kinda puts a little bit more of a gap in between. And that's the other thing, we're going from three plans to four plans. If you look at the comparison, the plan design, which is in this last sheet here, the big sheet, this is gonna show you how they equate, and obviously there's, you know, there's gonna be differences between deductibles and stuff, but the comparability-wise, Plan A was the closest to the standard plan, Plan B was closest to the basic plan. The basic plan's a little bit more of a higher deductible plan, if you will, but so was the Plan B. And then Plan C was comparable, that's their minimum value comparable to our minimum value. So it gives them a few more options. We also took it to where it's, we had it separated out to where, and they could, previously they could opt out of dental, but now they can opt in to two different types of dental. There's dental Plan A, dental Plan B. And if you don't decide to opt into a different one, if you have the premium or the standard plan, you're gonna opt into Plan A dental unless you say otherwise. And if you just, if you don't opt into any with the basic, you'll go Plan B dental, but you can flip-flop it. And we got a reduced rate through the consortium for vision, so actually vision is included in the premium, standard and basic plans.
And if you didn't do anything, you stay in the, you, you're in the standard plan if you don't?
Yes.
If you just roll over and don't say or do anything?
And the quick, yeah, the quick amount of time we were, we had, we had the quick turnaround. We had a two-week open enrollment period and for that reason, the trust put kinda defaults in. So if you did nothing and you previously were in Plan A, like Bill said, you opted into the standard plan. If we heard nothing from you and we, we assumed you were continuing your coverage because we would've heard otherwise, you opted into the standard plan. Plan B, you opted into the basic and Plan C, you opted into the minimum value. We had to get a change form for you to opt into the premium. So.
So making this move in short means what to our employees?
Long-term, it's gonna stabilize their coverage and it will put a cap on cost increases while also being able to keep their same coverage.
And it saved them compared to what it was going to be?
Mm-hmm.
It saved them a whole lot of money. And the coverage, actually, if you look at it, the standard plan is better than, than our standard plan, I thought it was.
Plan A.
I thought it was actually an upgrade for, you know, for the amount of money you, I think you're getting more, more for your money now.
Mm-hmm. And if you decide to go with the premium plan, which when you look at the, the 160 for single for the premium, we were projecting to go to 164 for the Plan A and the premium plan is a significantly richer plan.
But that was based on our current situation, right? In the health trust?
It was.
The increase, right?
Yes, yeah. The 60, they were looking at a 64% jump in rates without changing any plan design or they were kinda looking at a combination of the two. So they were looking at basically making it a weaker plan while, you know, still seeing about a 32% jump. They were trying to split it out. So this, this will stabilize it significantly and now that we lean on a larger population, in most cases, you're not gonna see those spikes that you did previously.
So there, there are people who are gonna have to get prior authorization for certain medicines. They had the medicines that they covered and if your medicine wasn't in the ones they covered, you have to get a prior authorization from your doctor and medical mutual?
It's from the doctor. It's the same thing. The previous plan had them, but it's been, the, the, those plans were intact for so long that a lot of those prior authorizations were just carrying over year to year. That prior authorization comes with it being a whole new plan design. Now, sure, there is a different list of medicine, so it might, you might not have needed a prior authorization for medicine under the current plan and you might need it under the new plan, but in most cases, that only comes down to having a conversation with your doctor and your doctor will then contact medical mutual to say, yes, prior, you know, that's not something literally that the employee will have to deal with other than contacting their doctor
Yeah.
to say their insurance changed.
Yeah. When, at what point are you gonna, I mean, obviously their plan numbers and stuff are gonna change.
Mm-hmm.
So when, when do you, and this is almost December, so when do you roll that out?
They should be receiving their cards in the latter half of December. You know, the plan will be in place January 1st regardless, but everybody should be receiving their cards and they do get a new card for medical prescription, dental and vision. They'll get a brand-new card for them all. And we didn't previously have a card for dental. We opted not to
Yeah.
send that out for some reason, but it's no cost, so you said, we, we're sending that out so people have a physical card. The other piece of it is, we're not changing dental at all. We're basically taking Delta Dental and picking it up from our current provider and dropping it into the, the LERC plan. So coverage-wise, exactly the same. Medical mutual coverage-wise is exactly the same, other than kinda the, the cents and dollars of it. So the deductibles are different depending on the plan you go with, but the provider network itself is still medical mutual, exact same doctors covered and everything. The vision is, is different. There's gonna be a different group of providers for that, but it's a lot of your, still your big box vision, you know, your union eye care, things like that.
Yeah, actually, it was most of, most of the doctors in Lorraine were on there anyway.
Yeah.
You know, my, my only real question was I, and my only worry, and I'm speaking for myself, was I was hoping I would get those, you know, the card and the numbers enough so that I could do the prior authorization before I go into January, you know?
Now, and you should be able to do that regardless. It's, it's not a matter of when you get the card necessarily, it's, it's more of when you're in the system. And we sent over all the spreadsheets, I did, I made sure I sent them over before the break. So they have all that information now. It's just a matter of them populating it into their system. And as soon as it's in the system, really, is when you can contact them and they'll give you, like, if you're looking for the, like pharmacy authorization, you can contact CVS-Caremark once you're in the system and they can help you get that information that you need to get and give to your doctor. Or in most cases, you can probably go to your doctor, especially if it's a doctor in the area, and say you're through the Lake Area Regional Council Consortium and you're through CVS-Caremark and they can normally connect the dots even prior to that.
Okay.
But probably the, the best bet is, once you're in the system, is contact Caremark, which you'll be in the system probably by December 15th, I would think. You might not get your card until shortly after that.
Yeah, it's still good.
Yeah.
You know, I think if you did it within the last week, most people will still be, uh...
I know I've been making, that's why I got it done prior to going on break because I wanted to give them that extra 10 days or so before the end of the month. They said absolute deadline would be December 1st, but I wanted to make sure that we gave it to them prior so they can have it. Those extra 10 days might mean the difference between getting it prior to Christmas break or after. I mean, I don't wanna, since December is such a...
And the, and the smart people will have their prescriptions done. I guess you get it all the way up till December 31st.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then that's the cutoff date, you know?
Well, you could go, if you go in and you have a three-month supply that you have due, you could fill it in December and have three months.
Yeah.
It doesn't, they're not, it's not like they're gonna say, okay, we're not giving it to you past December 31st. You can get a full prescription filled.
Yeah.
It's just filling it after December 31st will be through the other one.
Yeah, and, and, and that's the other thing is, the people, I think they need to know is they have to contact Express Scripts and say, hey, I'm not accepting anything after December 31st.
Yes.
Because if they do send it to you after December 31st and it's billed after, then you, you're responsible for it. So people need to know that they need to make that contact.
So do we just ban the trusts?
The trust is still gonna stay in place, but more so as we're building out a wellness plan and building out, just kinda keeping them in the loop. Cause I think it's important to still get their feedback and to go away from it altogether, I don't think. We're, we're trying to push it out to make it look like we're, we're building out the wellness plan, making it look like the, the district is taking such an active participation in transitioning this that it's almost like, I don't wanna say protecting our investment, but in a way, making sure that accountability-wise, people are taking care of themselves. That's why we're gonna have, the other piece to it is, if you see on the last page there, there is a wellness incentive deductible, that if they do participate in a, or a blood draw and an online risk assessment, they opt into a lower deductible. So we're going to offer those two pieces twice a year. So we're gonna do it once in the spring, once in the fall. And that's all they have to do is to do the, to participate in those two things and you opt into that lower deductible.
So what are we paying?
So their expectations still that we're going to advance them the dollars that they'd requested earlier in the year? Or we already advance everything we need to advance?
At this point, I, the way I'm running it is, I'm going to, with us transitioning out, we now can tap into the run-out reserve. And my thought is, we've got roughly, I think, 840-some thousand in there and if the projections are correct of 862, we continue payment as normal and then start tapping into that run-out reserve. If we need, you know, some, some extra funds beyond that, then we would look at tapping into the, the 400,000 that they were asking to advance earlier. But I, I held back on advancing any part of that, even though they had the authority to request it because you guys passed it. I didn't wanna do that. I figured, since we're going in a different direction, let's try not to tap into that. Let's look at the run-out reserve and see if we can get through with just that.
So then, the health trust piece, what, what if that costing us now? That it's not our primary piece, but for the wellness thing?
The wellness is, it's something, we get wellness dollars through LERC. So we're able to build that out and they give us, you get, I don't know what it'll be for a district our size, but they do it based on, on per-employee programs, but you get a sizable amount. I know when I was at Sheffield for the size of district there, we got close to $7,000 to build out a wellness plan, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it goes a long way considering hosting like wellness fairs and things like that. The other thing is, you can use it to buy like incentives, if you do like a, a Biggest Loser contest for the district, things like that, to kinda, to motivate the population and kinda trend them towards that wellness piece. But on, by itself, there's no, there's no cost to that unless you decide to really make it an elaborate program, which we were just typically, or we were just going to take and do Wellness Champions at each building and then have an overall District Wellness Champion. And that is what I'd like to see, the, the trust itself transition into is that wellness kinda group. So we have feedback from each building and can look at, they, they would make the decisions on what type of contest, programs. They would have access to those funds to kinda transition and gear towards that wellness program.
So what do other districts do who don't have a health trust?
Depends on what they, what they're in. There's a few different options. You can go self-funded or fully funded. When it comes to this, we would be considered fully funded underneath the consortium because our rates are locked. If you're self-funded, you can be, you can be responsible for that extra piece. So like we were with the trust, essentially, we were self-funded or the trust was self-funded and that's why you see those additional costs flowing in when the rates that they recommended didn't cover the claims. So it depends on if, if the other, the neighboring districts, the good majority of them are with LERC within Lorraine County, the other ones are, either they go self-funded or in some cases, they join a different consortium.
I guess my bigger question though was, we have administrators, consultants, managers and all those other tiers. It's like four tiers of payments going out inside that trust. Are those people still gonna be in place? It's gotta be paid.
No.
Okay.
Yeah. We will keep Mary on for three months because she's gotta do the audit of the current year.
Okay.
And then everyone else, and trust me, they're trying to still stay involved and still trying to...
Yeah, get a paycheck.
Yeah, but I've, I've informed them that, you know, I, I've allowed them to offer kinda how they felt they could supplement where we're going, but the coverage...
That was what I was asking.
Yeah, no.
So right there. Basically...
Are we still giving their folks money?
No, 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 no.
Apparently, the health trust is...
Mary was good.
Oh, she was?
Yeah, Mary was, Mary was a resource. I mean, she's just one person, but...
She is.
And she was, she was quite a resource.
And the other district she utilized or she works with is North Ridgeville and more than likely, they're going away from it too. Just the, the trust model
Right.
in today's day and age, just
Throwing money away.
it doesn't make sense.
Throwing away money.
It was a great idea back in 92 and probably for a good 10 years after that, but with the rate of returns and stuff you're getting on investments, it doesn't make sense.
So it's short the health trust has no role.
The trust itself does.
He cut that short, didn't he?
Kinda like us.
Yeah, the trust itself kinda does, but...
Well, I, you know, I just wanted to be clear.
But we're not, we're not bleeding out money to them anymore.
No, no, no. The actuaries will, their contract will turn December 31st. Mary will, like I said, will stay on for three months, kinda help with the transition, but also with the audit. And then we do have, there's the other company that actually physically does the audit. They will stay on for their audit piece for three months. And being that there's gonna be some run-out that occurs in, into 18, we're gonna have to do an audit a year from then as well. And, you know, January of 2019, we'll have to do the audit of 18 because there will be some claims paid. Then the other piece to that is, oh, is it, there was one other? Oh, ACA reporting. They will still have to do the ACA reporting piece as well. So, and that's the same company that does the audit and the ACA. And they were the ones that are trying, before we decided to transition out of the trust model, they were pushing to do a wellness program within the trust as well. We weren't seeing a savings with that for at least two years and it was, they wasn't incentivized in a sense. It was more that our population will get healthier, so we'll see trends of claims coming down.
And there was no real reason for them to join in and do it.
Yes. And there would've been an additional cost to bring that service on as well. So. And there would have been an additional cost to bring that service on as well, so.
Good enough.
Good?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next piece, 8.02. It's the five-year forecast financial update. Figure how I go about this is, I can tell you, the budgets that were put in place back in February are still in this, so a lot of the purchase service, supply and materials, those are gonna still be trending the same way.
That's what my question's gonna be is, is there any differences in this one than the one in May?
The two big differences is, I tried to factor in some of this transition piece for the health trust. At this point, right when I was kinda tweaking the last couple of numbers, about mid-October is when we decided to trend, to move from it. And I tried to put some of the rough numbers they were giving me. It should be relatively close. It'll at least give an idea. You might see that drop-off piece of what we'll save in the latter years in 2022. Probably is, probably be a higher savings, but in the same regard, there might be a little bit more upfront cost than what I was projecting. But over the life of the forecast, it should be relatively close. When I do the May update, I, because I've done calculations since then, and trending-wise, it looks like if we stay in average, roughly about a 4% to 5% increase year-over-year after our rates unlock after a year and a half with the truck, or with LERC, they will, based on that, we're looking at maybe an additional 200 to 250 over the life of the forecast. When you're considering, we're talking 9 million to 10 million a year, that's minimal over five years. So, and again, I mentioned that we're probably looking at maybe a 10% increase from current rates when we come out of this at the end of the five years. And that, I don't think I nearly accounted for, so I think some of that could be offset there too. Oh, and the other piece to the trust as well. Conversations I had with LERC was, there's a dollar amount. We want, we have to, we have to fund 25% of one year's amounts, premiums. Once we hit that, and that's, that's, that 25% is broken up over four years. If we hit that 25% number sooner, they will meet and consider actually pulling us out of that funding piece. So our rates could drop sooner, depending on how fast, you know, because they projected it based on current year claims. If this truly is an anomaly like, you know, a lot of the actuaries are saying, because it's such a big spike, we could fund that sooner than four years and possibly not have to pay the higher premium amount to be vested, because we might get vested sooner. So that's, that's not factored in, but it's something to consider. And then the other piece was the state foundation revenue. We were projecting for this year 2.4 million. Early numbers based on the foundation, when, because the foundation shifted the first October payment and the projections the state's showing now is closer to 2.5 billion. So at least, that made me feel better seeing that it's coming in where they were projecting it would come in at. And again, we still should see that 2.6 million increase next year as well. So beyond that, a lot of this is the same. You're gonna see that's the difference when we transitioned over. We're showing, I think we're showing in 2021, 130,000 surplus in May and we're showing a .2 million now. And that's some of the changeover from the health insurance spike, because there was no change to the trust factored in that prior. So those are gonna be the differences. Any other questions?
I think I asked this before. And I'm not sure if you had the answer at the time I asked it, but we released and approved a payment to Ohio Department of Education for the search firm, for the CEO. Is that ever reimbursed?
Don't believe we've gotten the payment yet. But it was put in, it was, I, I'll double check. At that point, when you asked me, no, we hadn't.
Correct.
But we were doing it, they're reimbursing based on quarters and typically, we have to have it in within 10 days after the quarter ends submitted to them. I know we submitted for it. Let me double check and I'll get back to you guys tomorrow.
Thank you.
At that point, we didn't. I thought I sent it back to you that we didn't.
No, we didn't, right, at the time. But you were uncertain because, you know, you weren't, you were gonna check on it, but yeah.
I'll take a look and send an email to you guys. I'd be shocked if we haven't yet, but Karen doesn't necessarily update me on those. If we get a payment like that in, she'll normally just book it and so. And normally, if we don't get it, she, that's when I hear about it, so. We might've got it and, but I'll let you guys know.
And the only other question I have is, I saw some positions posted. Does that have an effect on our funding? Are those additional positions that were posted, were they replacements? I think there were six of them that I can recall. And again, we haven't received a whole lot of information, so, you know, for my own personal, I don't care, I don't know if anybody cares about that information, but, you know, I mean, we fought hard for a lot of years to remove some positions and get the focus back in the classroom. And I saw those posted positions and I was just curious, are those additional to what we currently have or...
They are new positions, but from what early conversations are with Mr. Hardy is that they will be cost-neutral. So they might be taking the place of a previous position, so.
I understand people are interviewing for those positions or in current positions.
There's two of them.
Oh, just two?
Two so far.
Okay.
Yes.
So yeah, because that was the question, are these, so the administrative positions? There's six of them. Is it a change of job description? And they are six positions that exist? These are the six positions that are gonna replace those six? Or are there, these going to be additional personnel in the district?
I don't know the ins and outs of it honestly just yet. What I can say is, because of course, I wanted to know when I'm doing the forecast, how is this gonna impact? Do I need to put an extra dollar amount in there?
That's why I asked.
Yes. And at that point, he told me that no, any additional positions will be cost-neutral and that they will more than likely, due to reorganization.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be reorganization.
Well, if it's cost-neutral, that means that either people would...
It'll be offsetting.
Offset, yeah, they will either be terminated or in a new position.
Correct. Transitioning to a new position or, I don't know otherwise honestly.
Is that the same for the firms that got hired? They're replacing people too? I'm sorry, move on. Sorry, that's...
Hello, Tony.
I know.
Any other questions about the forecast? And then the last piece, I know we wanted to have a levy renewal discussion. I'm not sure if you still want to with Bambi not here. But this is, I confirmed the info with the auditor's office as to what I was thinking and projecting. The emergency levy, it expires tax year 2018. The last year of collections is 2019. So May and November of 18 is the first opportunity to put them on the ballot. And then they would take effect then, the, it would be January 2020.
Was that was about three and a half mil or something like that?
Yes. And actually, if you switch over, it's on the third page, it's the 2012 emergency. It's actually 6.03 mils, it's 3.1 million roughly. It's the, it's this one here on the 2012 emergency. And being it's an emergency, it's passed at a dollar amount, not a milliliter. So that's where the 3 million, 3.1 million comes in.
I just remembered it was the, we asked for what we thought we could get and not for what we wanted. You know, so that was, that was the reason I remember that number.
And then beyond that, we have the three current expense levies that are coming due. They'll collect through 2021 and the first time we put those on is November of 2020. So we got some time with those. But those would be the next renewals beyond this emergency.
For 18, 2020?
Yes. Would be when we can first, first put them on.
Those will be renewals, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's when we can first put those on, but keep in mind, you can do it the November of the prior year and then we have the full year after to renew as well. So it's not just, we have one shot. It's that November of 18 and then we have the entire 19 calendar year to put them on as well.
Yeah, I was really hoping that Bambi would be here or some representative of the Citizens Committee.
I'm a representative of it, but I don't have all the information that you need because I've been with Bambi since, since 20, since about 2005. I've been with, with that, you know, I know, but we haven't had a meeting in a long time.
No, yeah.
You know, it's probably...
And that's what sparked the conversation between Bambi and myself was, you know, should you guys start meeting? You know, what's the plan gonna be? And I just thought it'd be good to have some open dialogue with her and, you know, give her a dialogue.
Sometimes you need to start building that treasury up a little bit.
Mm-hmm. That's for sure. Any other questions?
Yeah, because it does relate to the whole finance piece. So, and this is probably Jeff Hawkes also. Where we are in terms of the building project, because we're not done.
We're not, we're still making payments. I don't know percentage-wise, we're tying out, I don't, that would be more of a Jeff Hawkes.
Because we've still got potential demolition to do or other construction to do. We still have LFI to disperse.
Last I know, he was still getting pressure to kinda, what direction are we gonna do with the demo? And they want, they want an answer now.
Yeah.
Sure they do.
And I think that's a place where, and maybe Tony, you can reach out to CEO Hardy. Those dollars are pure levy dollars. There's no more state money we're dealing with. We're dealing with our interest money and our taxed money. And I think that there are conversations, I mean, because again, it has to do with whether we're gonna be building a new alternative high school, which is gonna determine whether Southview is demoed or not. I know we've got a whole lot of preliminary stuff done that's just kind of hitting, hanging in limbo. There were firms working on looking at design and all that stuff and I would assume probably there's not been much communication with them or maybe there hasn't been.
Not that I'm aware of.
Right. And so again, so we have these professional entities who we've got kinda dangling in the wind.
And I would think that those, I mean, because essentially, it's a quote. I would think that those quotes are probably only good for so, so long anyways. So then, who knows if they're even valid.
Well, not just that, just there's a quote, but there's a nature of, of communication in business. And when you have a group that's working with you and you've been working with them and then you have this vacuum professionally that's challenging. And so again, even in terms of the state piece, I don't know, we don't have any idea of anything. We still have to deal with the bond oversight committee because there's still monies that we're accountable for. And at this stage, it's hard to be accountable when you don't have any working knowledge of what's happening. And so we've built, what, 15 buildings? 14, 15 buildings? We're at the final last-minute stages of that. And so from a continuity perspective, and what are we doing? Because the longer we wait, the less value we get out of our LFI money. I mean, every month, construction costs go up, demolition costs go up. And so, and then not to mention, we've now lost the season. We can't, there's, no matter what anybody does, we're stuck until spring. So, and that's gonna be a, first, we're gonna hit the new year when the costs, when all the rates shift. And then we're gonna get to spring and everybody's got projects. So how do you get on their list? So we really need to, with some urgency, figure it out.
Yeah, I'll reach out and start asking some questions because there are some things tied around that too, that we were discussing prior to the, you know, the change in situation in the district.
Our plan would be out of lease. We had two years with a third-year option.
Yeah, we wanted to be, we wanted to be out of there.
You had the conversation about the alternative school, you had a conversation about the stadium, you had the conversation about what we're doing with the Southview facility that we haven't had any... And I know that's not questions for you, you know, so certainly, you know, but as in light of this conversation, they are directly tied to finances. Again, the building project, and I agree with Tim. I mean, there's gotta be some kind of sense of urgency to close this up. And I'm certain that the state of Ohio would love to see us close it up and get out of this project. It's been a long, it's been a good project for the district and we got a lot of great facilities out of them, including this one. And, you know, it's been a good partnership for the most part, so.
But to make sure we get the most out of that interest money.
Absolutely.
We need to not drag. I mean, I know there are lots of things that are very urgent that are going on. I know they have the 90-day plan, all that stuff. But we gotta kinda multitask.
I know it's something that he's aware of because Jeff has had the conversations. I've sat in the room with them when they had the conversation. So he's, he's been brought up to speed. And I know Jeff's came to him a few times and brought up the fact that, hey, they're looking for an answer on whether we're demoing or what. But I, I don't know where it sits currently. I just know we've had a couple meetings over the last couple of months.
And I'll reinforce, that's a conversation that needs to be had with folks who've been involved in this process. There's a certain handicap that you have if you've not been from this point to that point. That was one of the reasons why, if you've been with the bond oversight committee, it's been the same chair, I believe, since the beginning of the project. There have been certain things that we've done to try and maintain a certain continuity. And, you know, and there's a, there's not much you're gonna, the learning curve of a few months is not gonna adequately. So there are folks who are engaged in the community and we need to probably continue that engagement because the institutional memory's already there. There's no new learning that has to be done, it's decision-making. So I just think that that should really have some urgency. If I hadn't emphatically stated that.
I agree. I don't think anybody at this table disagrees. All right? Any else?
Nope, nothing else.
Thank you.
Unless you have any further questions for me, Louis.
Well, everybody good?
Do we have anything going on county level? Would those things go through you if people are getting tax abatements and those kinds of...
If it's a tax abatement, in most cases, I mean, it's gonna flow through the city, but in most cases, I'm made aware of tax abatements.
Okay.
I don't know that...
I just thought that with the whole Mercy thing that's going on.
And that brings up a good point because we did have some conversations with Chase Rittenar about that and...
Tiffs, we're gonna get hit, I got a feeling that we're gonna get that call. Remember the last few years? Because they have to be done by the last meeting of the year.
Yeah.
Will there be a new TIF this year? And again, and as far as I would understand, that's only decision that could be made by a school board because that's a tax-related issue.
Yeah, and it, but if you remember right, in most cases, TIFs, the city has been nice enough to let us be involved in that, but ultimately, the city has control of TIFs.
But only for, the city's involved thus because if they want 100% TIF.
Correct.
Listen, they can take their piece that they want for 10 years and do whatever they want.
Correct.
That's not enough. So the real TIF piece...
But I, I would agree. I think that's, it's tied to revenue and local tax dollars.
Yes.
Yes, so yes, I would agree.
In our conversations with Mayor Rittenar, when we were doing that, was that they were going to produce a system in which they would evaluate that and bring us to the table and have some conversations and make sure we are aware of what the city might be doing. But yeah, no, I hear what you're saying.
And maybe you or somebody can reach out to them if they anticipate that coming forward to, you know, give us a little heads up.
Every once in a while, I wouldn't mind having the CEO, if he would come to a meeting just, just to talk about what he is doing differently in education. I mean, seriously.
I can certainly extend the invite.
Well, and I think you, I mean, I mean, he doesn't have to be here every, every time, but, but I mean, there's, there's things that he's doing. And here's my reasoning. I mean, we, we, we wanted to collaborate with, with everything going in. So if I'm gonna be here, I'd kinda like to know what's being done. So if we're successful, maybe we could continue it. And I mean, you know, to be, you know, more or less be, be somewhat part of it. So like you said, it's institutional knowledge. Because Josh, if you leave and he leaves and everybody leaves.
Unfortunately, that's not a decision we can make.
No, it's not. But I mean, I think the, I think it would be good for him to, to, to talk to us once in a while and just tell us, hey, I think we're doing this differently because this shows that you get better results this way. You know, I mean, really, how much, how much have we talked about? We've talked a lot about money over the last eight, eight years or so and we did a lot with money over the last eight years. But, you know, maybe, I think we depended on our superintendents to... you know, maybe, uh, I think we depended on our superintendents, too, and, and put our faith in them, that they were going to, you know, do the right thing.
No, we had a, we've had a commission in place for four years.
Yeah.
Whose explicit role was, you know, there's been extreme academic oversight. I mean, ODE, the Department of Education, has been in this district for four years, leading this whole piece. So, it's not like there's been, uh, an absence of...
I guess I'd say, how'd that work for you?
Yeah. You're the same ODE that's here now.
Yeah.
ODE hasn't changed.
I'm, I'm hoping for better results.
Any new business? Any committee reports? You guys hold any committees? Well, we're on our little, you know, it's kind of like, you know, we get a little break, you know, a little vacation from Board of Ed.
All my committees got cut.
Yeah. I'd ask for a hearing in the public, but again, you're good?
I'm good.
And you guys are more than welcome.
Yeah, hey, you could just chump in there.
Speak up. Join the party. Um, I do want to have a very brief executive session pending litigation update on some things that I was updated on, and just make sure we're on the same pace. I know there's some questions surrounding that. So, it would be extremely brief. If you guys...
If it's appropriate, um, do we want to invite Yvonne into the session?
Certainly. Certainly. She may be dealing with it when she sits, uh, in that seat right there next to Mr. Ballard. So, yeah, I have no objection to that whatsoever.
Which one are we going in for?
Uh, we're going to have to go in for C.
Okay.
So, motion to go into the session for item C?
Item C.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
December fourth.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV 20 WLCS.